Time is six oh two, we'll call to session the Planning and Zoning Commission Regular Meeting of June twenty eighth, twenty twenty two for the city of Glenwood Springs. This is a hybrid meeting with telephone number of one, three, four, six, two, four, eight, seven, seven, nine, nine, and the webinar ID is eight, two, five, eight, six, seven, two, eight, four, three, zero. And Hannah, please call the roll.
Commissioner White.
Present.
Commissioner Sipperly.
Here.
Commissioner Waller.
Here.
Chair Shaver.
Here.
Commissioner Connerton.
Here.
Commissioner Hardcastle.
Here.
Commissioner Davy.
Okay, and we need to seat alternate Davy.
I move to seat alternate Davy. I will second.
Okay. And a voice, voice vote of all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Welcome. And then next on the agenda is receipt of minutes of May twenty fourth, twenty twenty two. We have any comments, corrections?
I think there was an omission. I was the person who asked about the thirty foot higher retaining walls in the beginning of the sentence. I believe this missing.
Okay.
Can you?
Where would?
Can you clarify what part of the sentence was missing?
The beginning part that said my name. It says she asked about the thirty.
You were the she.
But it didn't mention that I was the one who was asking.
Thanks. What, what page are you talking about?
And which minutes?
The, the May twenty fourth minutes. It was regarding the Rafter.
Yeah, I've seen that, but I don't remember.
It was. I just found it. It is on, hold please, page four of the packet. That would be the second paragraph or third, third, second, where there were some pronouns being used.
Yeah.
Staff deferred to applicant, he pointed out, and then down below, I think that's where it says she.
Yeah.
Point five on that.
In the May meeting, for clarification, May.
May twenty fourth, yeah.
It is the one, third bullet point down, Hannah.
Yeah, it was about forty foot.
Thank you. We'll get that changed.
Okay. Any other corrections? Well, I'll call for a motion to accept those minutes.
I'll make a motion to, I'll make a motion to accept both May twenty fourth and April twenty six minutes.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept the minutes of May twenty fourth, twenty twenty two and April twenty six, twenty twenty two. And call for the vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, and I'll now open the floor to comments for citizens appearing before, that are, that are appearing for items that are not on the agenda. Okay. I see no one here in council chambers and anyone online? No? Okay, so we'll close that portion of the agenda and return back to item five, planning item nineteen twenty two code amendment, hotel conversions. And Jen?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Let me just share my screen here, so hold on just a second. Good evening, everyone. I'm here this evening to talk about a couple of changes, proposed changes to the development code. And we'll just at a high level say that the, the reason that we're bringing these changes to you as a proposal is because we think that we're kind of at a crisis level related to housing at this point. The, we certainly saw in advance of the pandemic that we had a huge need in terms of housing. So the twenty nineteen housing, regional housing study said that we needed about two thousand units and primarily in lots of different categories, but primarily in the lowest AMI band. But we have seen that that be exacerbated by the pandemic, people who've moved here, who can work remotely for other reasons. We don't have a firm grasp of exactly how much it's been exacerbated. There is some work that's being done related to the increased cost of housing, but we don't have an updated housing study. We, we did look at having some of that information updated as part of a regional effort that we're doing with Pitt King County and other jurisdictions in the Roaring Fork Valley. But because it's all intertwined, it's very difficult without doing a full, you know, revisit of that housing study to have an exact understanding of what the housing need is in all of those categories, but hopefully we're able to share some of that with you as some of that information becomes available. But one of the things that we have recognized that the, there are increasingly what we're hearing from business owners is that, and, and I think evidenced by walking by businesses downtown and seeing every business in town having hiring signs in the windows and, you know, signs expressly asking for people to be kind to those who have shown up because there are so few people who are working that we recognize it's kind of a critical issue. And there is a representative from Rafter who may be able to speak to that more directly here in a minute. So the two changes that we're proposing to, to change in the code are related to, it's all related to hotel conversions as a general category. We have a number of kind of aging motel hotels in town. Anecdotally, we understand that they are not fully occupied all of the time. I do have an inkling that some of them may be used at sometimes as extended stay hotels. And this, we have talked to many developers over the past few years who have looked at putting these hotels in, under contract and converting them. I think primarily to the category of multifamily residential, so apartment buildings. And we have seen those conversations, the, the hotels fall out of contract over and over and over again. So there's clearly a barrier to redevelopment. But the reason we're bringing you something now after five years of, of having these conversations with developers is because we are afraid of the growing need in our community for entry level places for people to live. So the two categories of things that we're looking at are extended stay hotels. So this would be in adding this as a category in the use table. And I'll just, I'm going to kind of go through all of this and there is a lot here to absorb. So I imagine you'll have lots of questions. Extended stay hotels, creating an exemption for extended stay hotels and that were, that was previously another lodging use. So this, so we're not talking about converting something that was a warehouse building or an office building, but something that had previously been another lodging use. Providing an exemption to provide the additional number of parking stalls that would be required by the code today. When the existing footprint of the structure does not change and when the hotel is proximate to transit, which there's a code section related in, in the parking standard, standards that we would reference, but it's seven hundred and fifty feet from an active transit stop, stop. And when that number of units doesn't increase from the previous number of rooms. This is in the nonconformity section of the code. There are several changes that we're proposing that would be in that nonconformity section. The proposal would also create a new commercial use category with requirements regarding kitchenettes, bathrooms and clothes washing facilities on site. The idea is that these would be a, a commercial use and that they would have longer than a thirty day stay. So today stays in hotels are limited to twenty nine days and fewer. So if one of these hotels was to have somebody there for a longer period of time, they would have to enter into multiple twenty nine day stay contracts. Staff is proposing that these extended stay hotels would have rental agreements where the deed restriction, there would be a deed restriction that would require twenty percent of the units to be leased, an average of eighty percent AMI. And I will go to the AMI table in a little bit. That they would be max one hundred and eighty day stays unless the contract was with a governmental or quasi governmental entity. That there would be a change related to parking lot upgrade requirements, which is also in the nonconformity section. So upgrading the nonconforming parking lot landscaping is currently required when there's an increase in the vehicular use area. And then also they, there is a requirement today that a conversion would have to meet the minimum parking stall requirements when remodeling the structure and when it would cost more than fifty percent of the current assessed value, and that's across the board. So if you did have, say, a Safeway building or, you know, the, the mall building were to have, have one of these changes. So it, an increase of like the, the need of the parking, the use would require an increase in parking stalls. Today, it would be required when, when the use changes. And then additionally, that's the case related to the parking, upgrading to the parking landscaping requirements. So eliminating this for all uses, not just for the extended stay hotels, although we think it's particularly relevant to the conversion of these hotel properties. Because they're often maxed out in their use of the space and that in order for some of these hotels to convert, that they would have to be a complete tear down and rebuild. So you're losing the, you know, the housing that's there today or the, the, the units that are there today. And then additionally, staff is proposing that there could be a change, a local amendment to the building code, which is in title sixty, which is not in planning commissions purview, but certainly you're welcome to comment on it. That would offer a short delay of the installation of the fire suppression system. So when you have a, a change of use from a, a short term stay, so a twenty nine day stay or fewer days stay to something that is longer, so a thirty day stay or longer, then it changes the type of use that it is in the building code. And when that happens, when there's a change of use, the building needs to come to code related to the fire suppression system. So this would allow for a short delay, but only if, and the, the exact language I can bring up in a second, but only if it met certain criteria related to the water service. And then the second kind of approach that we're looking at is hotel conversions themselves. So the more traditional lodging use that is converting to apartments, could be condos, probably not, but multifamily residential. So this is really an incentive on process. So changing the process requirements to make planning commission, the decision making body. So for most of these hotel properties, the number of units would require a hearing both at the planning commission and at city council. And that's because of the, the various thresholds that we have. So one to eight is an administrative decision for multifamily residential, nine to twenty four is a planning commission decision. So you guys would be the deciding body if the hotel had twenty four units or fewer. Most of these motel hotels are going to have more than twenty five units. And so that would be decided by city council. So what we're proposing is that hotel conversion would stop at planning commission, you would be this deciding body. And then we also have a requirement for final plans, which is a, it's a secondary planning process where we get to the ninety five percent civils or hundred percent civils that we need for a project. There isn't an exemption for like a building that's already existing in the built environment that's changing. And the process to go through that final plans is still time to the developer. So it could be as few as eight weeks potentially, but often is much longer because it's the back and forth going to engineering, to public works for whatever reason. So the back and forth of the process often can extend beyond those eight weeks. And that's when we get to the development agreement. What we're proposing is to eliminate that step. So that would go to a development agreement basically after planning commission. And that's the agreement that we get all the things that the developer says that they're going to do, and then we're going to let them move forward in the process and they are vested. So this would allow, if it were approved for a hotel conversion to come to planning commission, get a decision, if the decision is yes, to move right to the building permit supplemental. And it's all the same civils and all the same things that they would have to provide. It's, it's not giving anything up in terms of our ability to regulate the, the process or make sure that they're meeting all the safety requirements than they need to, but it is time to the developer. Staff believes that these projects shouldn't presented at a public hearing, but that the full twenty eight week process is, shouldn't be necessary for these buildings where they're already in the built environment. This, we're also proposing to exempt development from the common open space requirements due to these sites being generally already constrained. They're often parked entirely for the open space with a little bit of grass and the building. So meeting the open space requirements would be very difficult and again could result in their needing to be a tear down. So a net loss of these units in, in the built environment. So here's the, the chart that stacks these up side by side. Extended stay hotel, commercial classification requires kitchenettes, washer and dryer facilities on site, at least a three quarter bathroom. Stay is not longer than one hundred and eighty days unless the contract is with the government or quasi governmental agency. Planning application would not be required because it's not change in its commercial to commercial. So it doesn't require the project to come to planning commission or city council. So it would go straight to building permit, which is a six to eight week review. Once we have a completed application. So sometimes people give us part of an application and they think it's six to eight weeks. It's from the completed application. Would stay commercial for the purposes of system improvement fees. When a building converts from commercial to residential, and there's a requirement that the, that, that property then pay for parkland dedication and for school impact fees. So this would stay in the commercial category. It would not be required to pay those system improvement fees. One thing I will say is that we're looking at our own process to build affordable housing and we had a presentation from Habitat for Humanity and even, so for example, the example, the product, project that they did in Basalt, which was in collaboration with the county and the city and there was still a more than hundred thousand dollar gap that they had to close when the, when the land was in the deal and the utilities were in the deal. So if you think about what we're giving in terms of the system improvement fee to get these units, that's there are units that we know are, that are probably sitting vacant that could house people and that is the reason that we're looking to do this. Also, that's the exempt from parking stalls if the footprint of the buildings does not change, the additional parking stalls. So if there sixty units and there are fifty parking stalls, what we're saying is that we're proposing that the, the parking stalls that are on site be the parking stalls that serve this development when it is, when it stays in the commercial category and when these are probably often seasonal uses. But the hotel would have to be proximate to transit. And so if there was one that was way out far away from transit stop, that's probably not going to work, but there, my understanding is that there are folks who work in this community seasonally, who are either here for visa work or other similar kind of seasonal work where they might not have cars. So that's kind of in the spirit of this extended stay hotel. And then the other provision is that the number of units wouldn't increase. So if you had big units that then could be cut into multiple, or there's a community room that could be added to the, you know, make converting that to a, an apartment or a, a living space. That's not what we're talking about. And this is, as long as the units don't increase. And then that ninety day extension for the installation of fire suppression systems. If they are on city water service at the time of the building permit and that it is sufficient to meet the requirements for fire flows. And that this could be extended by the building official for additional ninety days. Additionally, okay, so that's the, that's the one category. Extended stay hotel, hotel conversions going to multifamily residential. Residential classification would meet the full multifamily residential conversion requirements. Planning commission would be the deciding body if this were to be approved. No final plans review, which does shorten the development time by twelve weeks, the building permit review would be the same. Would be subject to the inclusionary zoning requirements, not proposing a change there. There, I do think that that's one area where you may have some, some questions. We're happy to answer them, would be exempt from the common open space requirements. And then would be subject to the requirement to provide parking stalls for the number of units. So in this iteration, and if it converts to multifamily residential, they would probably, you know, the developer of a property like this would, you know, it's, it's what's in the code today. They would have to probably combine rooms to make more like apartment kind of, you know, so there's a couple of rooms that are maybe already adjoining somehow through a door. You think that those kind of like seventies area motels that have those adjoining doors could be changed to make two rooms into one apartment to meet that parking requirement. Here are those income limits. So, and I realize that this doesn't have the, it doesn't have the headers on it. So I will look for another version of that. So code changes. Code amendments are a legislative decision by city council. Planning commission is recommending body to city council. And your findings should be whether and to what extent the proposed amendment is consistent with a comprehensive plan and other city policies that it doesn't conflict with other provisions of the code or other provisions in the municipal code. It's necessary to address a demonstrated community need necessary to respond to substantial changes in conditions in our policy. And it's consistent with the general purposes in any of this code, which I know a lot of that says the same thing. That's, that's what it says in our code that we have to do. So with that, I'm going to open it up to questions. And I will again mention that we have a representative from Rafter who, who is able to shed some light on these kind of hotel conversions.
Great. Thanks, Jen. Do we have questions for Jen?
Of course we do.
Caroline.
I am wondering how the ninety day delay in installing the sprinkler system would work. I mean, would you already have people living in the units and then work has to occur on the ceilings and you know, they're bringing the pipes in and stuff? Wouldn't it make sense to have the sprinklers in while the units are unoccupied?
We've had questions from developers about how do we continue to use this use once we take possession of it, but then also do the conversion? I think it primarily works when you have multiple buildings. So sometimes these hotels have more than one building. And so then you could keep one building in the twenty nine day stay piece while you're working on the, it, it allows for a little bit of flexibility. It's not a ton of time. And these sprinkler systems, really, they have to be the whole building to do, to do it properly. So and that's my understanding from the, the building department and the fires, the fire department. So I think it primarily is beneficial if there's multiple buildings.
And so part of that ninety day sprinkler delay, it mentioned that the size of the water line would be sufficient to cover the fire needs. So what if the water line also needs to be upgraded?
Then they would have to wait. I mean, they would have to be able to, they could not occupy. They would not get a certificate of occupancy until they had a fire suppression system in that met the requirements. So it is limiting their areas of town where it would not be possible then to have that ninety day delay. Um there are areas of town where it would not be possible then to have that ninety day delay be um part of the project.
But essentially, there will be no sprinklers anyway, ri- rights, if you if you. Have the big enough water line, you still don't have sprinklers, you still don't have a sprinkled building, so why have.
They would have to upgrade that in order, they have to upgrade the service, they have to upgrade everything before they could occupy. So they would have to do it with their building permit in advance of this certificate of occupancy.
Hmm, so they couldn't just do the sprinklers and the water line in the ninety day period that we would not allow that.
If they don't already have the sufficient service, they would have to upgrade the service and they would have to be on city water. Um we have lots of areas of of town where there's lots of um varying circumstances and so. Um in those cases, the the service and everything would have to be upgraded. And the fire suppression system would have to be in prior to the certificate, cer- certificate of occupancy.
Joy.
Could you just recap the or the ordinance about sprinkler systems? What the what the new requirement is?
So we went to the twenty one code, the twenty twenty one code. Um but it would not have changed for these uses. So we, I think since the two thousand nine, the building code has required single family residential. Um to be sprinkled and we've had a local exemption to that when we've adopted the the international building codes. That is exempted single family residential. There have been um requirements for fire suppression systems for um commercial, for attached multifamily residential. Um you know, there's. There's a book like this and there's probably a section like this is on fire suppression, so um. What I would say is that the adoption that we just did affects single family residential, it doesn't affect this.
Thank you, um so what on the extended stay, what is the benefit of the hundred and eighty days versus if they just go month to month? I mean, why, why is that such an issue?
It's a max um of, and it is a change in the building code when you. Move from twenty nine day stays to thirty day stays, is it transient versus not transient? It's so it's a change from an R one in the building code to an R two, and that is. Literally the sum to- total of my knowledge on the subject, um but I will say that um, so also at twenty nine days. And fewer, we are collecting lodging tax, so accommodations tax. Um but it's essentially that we are creating. We have not investigated, but I am certain that there are probably hotels that are operating in this extended stay hotel world. But there are hot plates and so they're not kitchenettes, there it's, they don't have fire suppression systems. Um allowing for this to happen, um allows for this kind of seasonal use of these hotels. And it will make them safer, um because there would be folk, you know, kitchenettes of some kinds, that's not a hot plate. That um there's, you know, if it converts, there will be access to um washer and dryer facilities. I can't speak to whether or not, I mean, it's certain that the la- there's laundry on site for those hotels, but whether or not there's any access for the people who live there, I don't know. Um but so making this creates kind of a seasonal opportunity for these hotels to be used in a, you know. In a longer term kind of stay, um for folks who are working in here in the summer, and we've had lots of requests. For not necessarily this type of uh of hotels, but more like how how can we. Make RV camping for people who are working here in the summer more possible, I mean, how, we've had lots of questions about. Kind of uh can vary our alternative modes of people being able to work here seasonally. Um and so this would make it um more possible for those, th- those hotels that we know. Are not always occupied to be occupied in this way.
So Will and so follow up, because you did mention the tax that the city collects, I mean. How impactful will it be, I guess, if there's like a whole bunch of these, is it as far as? Tax wise?
I don't, I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head, um.
I mean, how many units are we talking? You don't know yet.
I think it depends on how many of these kind of motels that would like to to make a conversion. Um we do know that we have a number of these uh hotels, motels that are um that don't have the. The big name banners that are associated with them, um and we have had developers come and talk to us about. Those hotel motels, um so there is an interest. From at least some of the folks who own these motels, hotels to sell them. Um but if how many of them will move in this direction, I don't have a handle on that.
All right, let me s- that answer that.
So so following up on that, are they mostly, I mean, when I think they're mostly located. South Glenwood and West Glenwood, I mean, that's, I mean, the ones that I think. I mean, I'm viewing in general, they're probably more the nineteen fifties, sixties, set me in those older. I mean, is that, is that what you're thinking from conversations you've had and versus, and and I guess why I'm asking that versus in the downtown? Corridor kind of thing for.
We, I don't think have had any questions from downtown hotels, I would not say that. The questions that we've had from developers um have been exclusive to the older hotels, there have been. Um hotels in the the newer hotels that have asked questions about conversion to multifamily residential.
Could they do like a partial conversion?
I would think so, I mean, we allow for mixed use, so um in if it's allowed in the zone. Um and I can bring up the zoning table, um which is where we um. We are just looking to to mirror in the hotel motel hostel or lodge in the. The same zoning, so it's, you know, and again, this didn't um come through on the, I can get you what those are.
Yeah, so.
In the category, but mirroring where they're allowed in the zones today.
No, okay, so so question I kind of have on the landscaping and I. Appreciate that, I think that's a great thing to to throw out, but but I guess a question I have was is should there be something that's a. At least a street scape, um you know, like between the curb and the and and the sidewalk. That just encourages landscaping, so you at least have a break. You know, between the the street and and this huge parking lot, which I mean, you know, I'm the ones I'm thinking about in my head. You know, when I drive down the road, there's all of those kind of things and and I know the code you have to have for every ten spaces or whatever it is, you have to, you have to have all that stuff. And it doesn't seem like that's so much needed, but it seems like a screening. Landscaping, if that's possible, would be a good thing to have, I guess that's all that.
If they're in that category of moving to the multifamily residential, where we're talking about removing the open space requirement. Um that the way it is currently proposed, it doesn't eliminate the other landscaping requirements that would have to happen. There are some still that would be in place for when those parking lots um convert, so.
But I'm talking about the extended stay.
The extended stay, so essentially, I think what we're saying is that it's a commercial use to a commercial use. And we don't in general. Um other than if it meets some of these other categories that we're talking about eliminating, we don't. Ask for them, if they have a s- a functioning parking lot and they're not increasing the parking area. Then we are not making them rip up parking stalls to put in.
I'm asking a different thing, though, I mean, I, I mean landscaping and all I'm saying is that. And I'm just kind of throwing out there that, you know, like in in any area where you have your little green spot between the curb and gutter and the sidewalk. If you can plant trees like we have, you know, whatever, I mean, that's all that I'm kind of throwing out there, I think it's great not having it and. You know, I think it's a great incentive to do, so anyway, that was one. That's a comment I had, um and then I thought I s- I read in there. Somewhere in one of the tables and I and I where I read it was was when I was going through the code, in fact, on the page you're at right there, you scroll back down. It says that there's, there's only one guest per room.
Uh one parking stall guest per room, so that the headers. This is what happens when you put together a staff report in about ten minutes, because I really did this on.
So so they could be two bedrooms, or I mean, it could be, so if they're units, so what is a unit?
So one space per guest room, so that's what we're saying here for the extended stay hotel, it's intended to mirror and I. I I think I need to add the space, it's intended to be the same as the hotel motel hostel or lodge. So if they didn't meet this, if they, if the extended stay hotel. That's being proposed wasn't previously a lodging use, it's one unit per stall that they would have to provide, no matter what the conversion is. If they don't, if they're not proximate to transit. They would still have to provide the the number of stalls, so I think what we're trying to do is create it. If it's more, it's already in the built environment that they're not changing it, but um and it meets some of these criteria that makes that more. Um approachable, but if they don't, we would still have this extended stay use, use in. In the use chart, meaning that, you know, you could have a warehouse building, if we had one that was vacant, convert to an extended stay hotel. And in that case, they would have to do the parking um that's required, one stall per.
Yeah, I'm good on the parking, I guess my question would be on number of of residents, I'll call them residents, you know, they could be. You know, they're lifties or whatever they are working, you know, I mean, I it it's an awesome thing. But I mean, could could you, could they set up like a bunk room and have ten people living in a space and that's okay, or or is it? Or would there be, you know, with with the rental agreement, because I saw that we're getting involved with the rental agreements of, you know. Deed restricted and all that sort of thing, so so does it limit the number of people in a unit, or does it say have added?
I would say that we have a limit on the number of occupants that can be in a short term rental. And this would be a conversion, so it would be similar, um I don't remember what that is off the top of my head, I don't think that. Um we have been approached by developers who are interested in doing like bunk beds and shift sleeping and. That that is not what we're proposing here, um but um I think it would be governed by the building code. And like I say, we do set those occupancies and Hannah actually may have um may remember more closely than I do since she spent so much time with the short term rental. Issue, but there is an occupancy that's set by. That is set by the building code and we may actually call it out in the short term. Use category, Hannah says no, um but. But it is something that is.
So there would be, so there is something that we already have, it's a.
And if we wanted to, I we may deal with it in the application or in the. The change of use, um it's it's something good to flag, I think for sure.
Okay, and then and then when you brought up application, that was one last question I had, so it so I saw that, and this is for the extended stay, that. The planning application is not required, but so and I know we're not changing you, it's commercial to commercial. But but is there, is there an application process still that they go through that says, here's all the stuff you have to present? Because if we're the deciding body, you know, you've done staff like they always do a wonderful job doing all that work for us. So we know all of those things, is that?
So it would still be a change of use because it's going from an R one to an R two. Um so we would, and it's commercial, so we would still require a a business license. And that's kind of how we catch those, that there's a business license when there's change, um then we do an inspection. And we um, it is, you know, if it's the same use to the same use, so it's restaurant to restaurant, but new owner. We focus really on life safety, in this case, when it's a change of use to a different use altogether. Then there would be other code requirements that would be kicked in, like the sprinkler system, um so. There, it could either be handled through a change of use permit that comes kind of through that business license or. Probably more likely we would get a building um permit that's for the renovations, because there would be renovations that are going to be required. Because we're going to require a kitchenette, we're going to require some other things, so um. There may be units that are out there that already meet the requirement and then it would be more the change of use, I think in particular. Um most of these are going to come through a a building permit application.
Thank you.
This is just kind of a general question, but you talked about just the exacerbation of um housing needs with on the onset of um COVID. Are municipalities talking about this changing because people maybe move, you know. Work remotely and then figure out they want to be back in more urban settings. Um I mean, I don't think there's any harm in making these changes on any level, but do we feel that there will be a shift back to maybe a. A more pre-COVID equilibrium, I guess.
None of the meetings that I have attended recently about housing has anyone broached the idea that it's going to to. That that we will return to um a quote unquote, normal time. I do think that um what we're seeing is that the the pressure. I think the pressure is coming a lot from people who are moving from places where, uh I mean, it's more expensive to live and they realize they can work remotely. We have great internet and, you know, um so they, you know, they want to live in Colorado. And they're currently living someplace else, I also think, um and I, this is just purely anecd- anecdotal. But some of the places that people are moving from are places that are experiencing um greater degrees of climate change like California. And so I can't imagine that there will be fewer imports from California, I think that that will continue to happen, Texas is another example. Um some of the folks who are moving here are coming from places that are um that have other concerns. It it's not just about being able to work remotely in a beautiful place, although I'm sure that's part of the attraction.
For the time.
Carol.
I have a couple other sort of clarifications, um. Back to Pete's question about the parking stalls, so is that a parking spot per apartment or per bedroom?
It's, it would be per guest room, so if they are. They're kind of single occupancy kind of studio kind of living, then it would be one parking stall. Which is what we require for lodging and um but it is also the. It i- i- if it were to go to the hotel conversion and it would be a full multifamily residential. Um it's still not one per bedroom, the code requires um one and a half stalls per unit. And then some for guest stalls, which essentially means that it's one point seven per unit um for multifamily residential. So we don't have a requirement that if you have a four bedroom. Apartment, that there be four parking stalls.
Um another question I had was a tick, for example, like a B and D that might have. Uh five, you know, short term use rooms and the B and B wanted to convert to an extended stay. Um is, is that also a commercial to commercial use and under the same regulations?
Yes, it is commercial, um. And. I think that as it's written. So the definition for extended stay hotel means any structure consisting of one or more buildings with more than five dwelling units. With provisions for living sanitation and sleeping that is specifically constructed, kept, used, maintained, advertised and held out, held out to the public. To be a place where temporary residences offered to persons for non-transit extended stays or stays longer than thirty days, regardless of the presence of. Rentals or leases for shorter periods of time, um extended stay hotels must include individual kitchenette facility, so. Um if it were five dwellings or fewer. Um we are not, so it, if it were six, and I can't remember where you, where you said that this was a um a bed and breakfast, whether or not that would be the criteria. So if you had one that was six, yes, I think that you could, if it was lodging. Move it to this category.
But if you had one that was five, are you now not allowed to make it uh extended stay?
I that this definition would not. I, that, this definition would not allow that, um, it, there is a provision in the code that. That exempts the five or like when you're taking a commercial use and you're moving it to a, uh, to a residential category. That if it is five units or fewer, then it doesn't, then it is administrative. And so that's what was driving this. So if we wanted to change it, we certainly could. Uh, but the reason, the reasoning sometimes like it's good to know why this ended up the way that it did. The reason that I put it as fi- as, um, more than five is because of that threshold. Kind of, um, piece related to public hearings.
But it essentially does mean that five or fewer is not allowed to convert to extended stay. And I don't think that's what we're really trying to do. So perhaps we would want to include those smaller places, um, in the general extended stay umbrella. Say we have six units and it's in an, an old house or whatever, uh, and they would all be required now to have a kitchenette. What constitutes a kitchenette?
That would be driven also by the, the building code. But I think, um, that, um. I think what we talked about was that it didn't have to be like an oven, but that there was some criteria. I think the sink is one of the big drivers so that you don't have a, uh, you're not using your bathroom sink. For kitchen facility so that it's, I think the sink is one of the most important components related to the, um, kitchenette.
And the stove top or?
Um, I think that I, I'm trying to remember my conversation with the, um, the building official. I don't think that it requires an actual stove top. Um, but I think that the intent is that these would have a facility that, um, is a kitchenette. And I, uh, you know, if we need some more specific specificity, we certainly can. I would hope that we wouldn't make it so onerous that we're, that we're creating an issue for. Um, somebody who's looking to, to make one of these hotel conversions. And, um, maybe we have, um, maybe Mike can answer some of those questions.
Cause I'm thinking, you know, if, if you don't provide him a cooking surface, either like a toaster oven or a burner. Then they're stuck with the microwave and that could be six months of just eating out of the microwave. And now they don't have a yard and they don't have a microwave or they don't have a, a way to cook. So, yeah, I, I, I would be, um, I'd sort of like to see how these are going to serve the, the population that we're trying to help.
Okay, Jim, please.
Uh, in terms of, uh, what you have here. Or reviewing agent, agency comments, uh, this was brought before the housing commission?
It was brought before the cat housing commission.
And was there a, a vote of confidence of any kind? It's, it looks like it was a favorable discussion.
They didn't vote actually, and I'm not certain if we, it was because we ran out of time. Um, we actually brought a different kind of proposal to them earlier this, uh, year. I think it was, it may have been very late last year. And talking about the hotel conversions and the parking and some of these other kind of barriers to redevelopment. Uh, the housing commission at that time asked us to go out and look and see what other communities were doing in this space. And what we found is that a lot of the communities are still requiring all of the parking. They're still requiring all of these, um, these requirements. So, um, we kind of set it aside for a few months. And then we've had this resurgence of developers, um, in sometimes working with an agency partner. Approach us about the need for these units. Um, and so we brought it back to the housing commission. Um, I think that their concern was in the, um, the idea that these needed to be more deeply affordable. Or a greater percentage of affordability. And. We, uh, while I don't disagree certainly. Um, you know, we do have an understanding that there is a, that sometimes the, even though there's an existing building. There's existing stock converting them is, is expensive to be able to retrofit in some of these, um, requirements. And that the more, especially percentage is what I'm hearing from developers. The greater percentage of the units that you require to be, um, affordable, the harder it is to lend on those. Um, so that is the, the reason that we, um, that staff proposed the, um, deeper than what is required. Um, in our inclusionary zoning, um, for a deed restriction. So a greater percentage and deeper affordability, but not 50% say. So 20% at the average of 80% AMI. Said that I was going to grab the, the chart, but I haven't done that yet, so I should. Let me stop sharing so I can go find it.
I'm pleased to see what our planners are doing. Just in general, I, it's a flexible proposal, uh, whether it's in previous cover open space parking. Uh, final plan review, I'm, I'm pleased to see what you're doing here. The only other thing I would, would ask is, was there any internal staff discussion regarding any other agency involvement? Or review such as any social service, law enforcement or code enforcement? Because of the higher density, uh, longer term stay, we would anticipate some issues regarding whether it be odor or noise. And, and was there discussion about just dealing with it, not any solutions on how to do it, it's just going to come about?
Um, you know, I, I talked to some hoteliers, um, we did, we did speak with, um, so it was a, a meeting with. Uh, the city attorney, um, so Carl Hanlon, um, Richard got to escape that day. And Hannah, our building official and our fire marshal, um, we didn't, um, we did not take it widely. So I, I would anticipate that there will be challenges. We, um, anecdotally again, we haven't researched, but do you know that some, um, hotels may be having some extended stays? And that there are some challenges related to, um, enforcement. So, um, but I did, I did not specifically approach it with the police chief.
I don't think that's a negative thing. I was, I was just asking, but otherwise I think this is, uh, what you're proposing and, and, um, bringing to us. Discusses and, and, uh, helps us handle a, a niche within that affordable housing. Uh, problem that we've been talking about for, for years and years, but specifically within the, the comprehensive plan.
One thing that I will say is that, um, that, um, in, in particular, talked to a hotelier. Who had in a previous career, previous job, worked in, um, hotels that were very deeply discounted. Um, or, you know, very, very inexpensive. And, um, there was a suggestion that we require additional lighting in the parking lot, that that can be helpful. We, I didn't include it, certainly is something that we could include here, um, in terms of that, that could be a deterrent to. Um, folks. I don't know what exactly that, probably more, um, just in, you know, shining the light on a parking lot. That, that, um, that that can help. But the circumstances for, uh. The concerns that this person was experiencing are probably very different from, um, from Glenwood Springs.
Well, that's a good example as to a component or a, an item that could be a discussion item. Do you think that, for example, uh, and maybe a, a lighting plan might be the result of a site visit? Of one of our planners prior to the, the presentation of what it is that we're looking at? Or, or it, is there latitude for the planner to, to look at certain things like that?
I don't think that we have a requirement that there be a photometric for when a commercial use changes to a commercial use. Hannah, am I wrong? No, okay, so, but we certainly could if, um, that there are any improvements to the parking lot. That, um, that there, but I also don't think that we, because we have, uh, concern about dark sky and light pollution. I don't think we also have a requirement that you have a certain sort of lights in a parking lot either.
No, but I, I think with a planner going on site and seeing absolute black and, you know, wanting the night sky. But without arbitrarily saying, hey, maybe we should look at a site plan, what do you think about this? Is, is that, that could be a discussion that, that happens prior to the staff report?
It can't be subjective, I think, is what you're. You would want to have it probably as a requirement, um, in the code. So just as you, as you do having, um, the washer dryer on site that there, um, I. I don't know that I can craft what that language looks like on the fly, but we could certainly, if you wanted to include it. Make sure that we looked to see if there was an example that we could use before we take it to, um, city council next week. Did I mention this is on fast track?
I know that you can do the lighting plan, I mean, I think it's great.
I think it's.
I mean, I mean, I mean, you can do, or, or it's an elevated thing. I know I've done them in the past in parking garages and different places where, you know, they're very dim. And then as people come, they ramp up to a certain thing and it's not that. It's not that onerous, I think, I mean.
Well, I think as an ex, as an existing use, that was already discussed in the original plans and the usage. However, if it's degraded over time, I guess that's where I was coming from. Uh, where, where maybe they had, they had shut lighting down and decided they didn't want to do it. We just want to make sure that we have a, 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 a safe area for them. But if it's existing, if it's been in compliance, then it's probably been covered.
I'm going to look to Richard to see if he has any ideas while we, uh, while we take some other questions.
Thank you. Sorry, I. I mean, I guess this is a question for Jim. I mean, we are still reviewing. Compliance with existing, existing zoning when these conversions happen. We're talking about just about extended, extended stay hotels.
I think we're in either category. I don't think that we have something in the code that drives, you have to have these lights on your building. Like you have to have these lights in your parking lot. So it would be something that would be particular to, to this use. So it would be part of the use specific standards if we were to require it. Because I don't think that in general, I mean, it's interesting, um, the neighborhood I live in. Which is a relatively new subdivision, so I live in part of Glen. Um, there are a handful of pedestrian scale streetlights in our neighborhood, just a handful. Um, and you often see in a code that there's a requirement that you have a, you know, light standard every 50 feet. Or every 35 feet or, you know, whatever the standard is for a subdivision. I, there is nothing in, that I'm aware of in our code that drives those kinds of lighting choices. Because I think we have made a choice overall that we are, the code itself is more, leans more toward it being dark sky. Than it does driving how many lights you have or where those lights are placed. Um, certainly other codes I have unfamiliar with have different standards.
Can we just make a recommendation that, um, that maybe staff works with? That has a discussion with the police department to just see, um, what you could build in the code. And if there is any need to, um, make sec, safety recommendations in the code. For this particular use, because it may not be necessary.
Okay, I'm going to ask Anna another question. Is there anything in the marijuana standards that, um, deals with lighting? In the marijuana use specific code?
Chose the one title that I don't. I need Trent for that, but I could search right now.
Okay, I, sometimes you see that in that, that because marijuana uses are, uh.
For security.
Their security, that sometimes you see those requirements in the, in the, um, that, that's why I thought of that one.
Okay, are we moving on from lighting or are we still talking about lighting?
Yeah, I, I think we could like have a discussion with the police and be like, are there any uses? They have a, a global conversation. Additional lighting would be beneficial, um, but I agree with Jenna. On balance, the, you know, the trend, you know, this is across the west slope is towards dark skies. So I think that's, that's always balanced with any lighting, additional lighting requirements. I think, I think at this point, that would be a hard. As you said, that would be a hard provision to craft.
And apply, but certainly if you wanted us.
For this use.
If you wanted us to do it, we certainly could make that recommendation to, when we bring it to city council.
I have checked the marijuana code, there's no reference to lighting.
So like I said, that, that's sometimes where you would see kind of an increased lighting provision in the code. Because there are security concerns that people might want to steal the product. Other codes that I'm familiar with have that as a provision. So, um. I, I, I didn't include it in this proposal because I think overall our general approach to lighting is, um, not to require it.
Can I comment on that? I, I, I'm not being negative of, about this and I don't think that it was a, a, a poor omission or a, a bad move on your part. I guess what I'm skimming over is social equity and the fact that these people, whoever they are, living in these, uh, temporary situations. As they hopefully, uh, in, increase their station in life, aren't, aren't finding it as, uh, a detrimental move. It's, it's a hardship, it's, it's, uh, uh, creating it. And bringing, yeah, bringing in other things that they didn't look at, they didn't, uh, have a concern of, uh, ahead of time. And it, it makes it more difficult. If this wasn't an option, then it makes it more difficult for them. This is helpful, I, I appreciate this. But I think, you know, making sure that agencies that can be more supportive are aware of what we're doing. And we're looking at these little things, I, I think that's where I was coming from, appreciate.
And, you know, the risk of trying to actually craft, uh, something on the fly, which I just said I wouldn't do. Um, I think that there could be a requirement that there be, um, a sharp cutoff lighting fixture at all. At all entrance doors, so you could have it, um, to the, to the, um, extended stay hotel itself. And then you could have a requirement that it be at each, um, uh, door.
Yeah, and we have two readings, uh, council, so we suggest this recommendation.
We may refine that language a little bit, but I mean, I think that if that's something that you're looking at, uh, at requiring, it seems like it would be. Uh, it's not an onerous requirement, um, for these. And, and there may be lighting for lots of these, um, hotels anyway, that's similar to that.
I, I like the idea of it not, well, okay, so not making it a requirement. I, I'm not, I'm not looking to push that, but I like the idea of the community driving past these and seeing them and looking at them as an amenity. An important part of what it is that we have in the community, rather than in that, that dark and dusty thing pushed back from the road and wonder what the heck's going on in there. Uh, I, I think it just needs to, to be something that they're wanting to go home to. And we're happy, we as a community are happy to have them there, especially those outside of this room and unaware of the process. And them needing to be here in the first place.
And, and I, I know you don't want it to be a requirement, but the thing of the developers, it's not a requirement.
Well, building codes will require lighting at entrances and. In any, any residential situation. So you're going to have some lighting at each door that is controllable.
But would it require it if it's commercial? And in the extended stay hotel, this stays in the commercial category?
Yeah, I'm not that familiar with the commercial side.
I mean, I think, I mean, I've did a lot of multifamily and for multifamily, it is, I mean, you put it out in every door.
So it might be something in specific hotels.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, yeah, the one thing I know about multifamily is that, you know, you do have to do a photometric. And there's this whole thing that goes with it and, and you can do lighting that keeps it from being, you know, that, that, that protects the dark skies and all of that sort of thing. I mean, I, you know, anyway.
There's great fixtures.
Right, there's, exactly, and, and in fact, one thing I would say would be, one thing you look at is some of these old places have crappy fixtures anyway. So you probably want to go in and get them into some sort of more, you know, dark sky fixture. You know, I mean, I think, you know, not that you want to cause people to spend more money. But I think if, if there's some upgrades you can do, then improves the situation, I think that's.
Good discussion, Joy.
I think I forgot my question, just kidding.
I think I forgot my question. Just kidding. Um, so. The hundred and eighty days does not apply to um, government or quasi-government entities. So does that mean in a lease or or leasing capacity? So if the entity owned the building. Then essentially they could. All of those leases. Would be not um. They would be exempt from the hundred and eighty days, correct? Say the city of Aspen bought a building.
Yes.
Okay, and then conversely, if the city of Aspen came and um, say they leased a block of rooms. And they were the least C. Then it would, the same would apply.
Correct.
Okay.
Hey, thanks, Shari. I had a care of it.
I had a follow up on um, some comparisons between the. The extended stay hotels and other um, residential requirements in. In part, I was concerned about storage, knowing that these um, motel rooms can be pretty small, and in. Apartments and such, we have a certain percentage of storage required. Are we going to require similar storage here, or will there be maybe a. Storage units offsite, because if you're crammed with a few people in a motel room, where are you going to put all your stuff?
I don't think that we we anticipate that these extended stay hotels are working, you know, more similarly to hotels than they are where, you know, that's why there's a a two-pronged approach. Um, and that if they are looking to be apartments, that then they would have to meet all of those requirements. Um, you know, I think that in general, what we're looking to is that this is more kind of. Um, as Commissioner Hertkessel kind of mentioned, either transition housing or potentially folks who are here seasonally. Uh, that these are workers who work for some of our attractions and some of our hotels who might be here for three months or four months. Um, uh, that primarily that is who we are anticipating would be in these extended stay hotels. Um.
But if you picture you're coming here to work for the ski season, you've got, you know, skis, snowboards, pants, coats, boots, all this stuff. And in in a motel room, I mean, you could be there for five or six months. I wonder if if um. Even elsewhere on a motel or hotel site, uh, I would like to. Consider providing some sort of even shared storage for a large um. You know, mainly sports, sports things. Um, one of the other questions I had was the providing the clothes washer. And dryer, so we don't have, you could have a hundred motel rooms and. Be okay with just providing one washer and dryer, and that's a surefire way to fight with your neighbors. I wonder if we should um, maybe suggest, you know, a washer and dryer set per X number of units. You know, I I don't want it to feel like we're warehousing folks. I I think it would be nice to. As Jim was saying, kind of create a more welcoming and residential um, atmosphere.
I wrote it down. Thanks.
Um, I just, Jen, I have a question on on page four, um, and it's. Uh, information from the Housing Commission talking of, talking about affordability. Um. I'm curious how are these, uh, is this a certain percentage of seventy to seventy-five percent for a CMC? Uh, communication specialist, for example. Or eighty percent AMI for an established teacher? Is that taking a teacher's salary and multiplying a certain percentage? And having it fall within those parameters?
It's it is, so it's the um, it's work that was done that Hannah will be able to speak to in a. A few moments um, about the work that we're doing um, kind of. There's there's lots of different work that we're doing in lots of realms in terms of housing, and one of the efforts that we're working on is there's an ad hoc group. Uh, three members of the Housing Commission are on that, but um, uh, lots of nonprofit folks and other business leaders. Who have been working with Clark Anderson from Community Builders, and that is a direct. Um, poll from the information that they provided to city council related to um, kind of the need that we have. Um, so uh, I didn't, I didn't do the work to actually do the numbers, but it that um. But they are aligned with these AMI levels, so it's a general category of what folks in those professions make, and then. Um, applying that to this um, CHAFA um. Uh, area median income threshold, so in the various bands, so at a hundred percent. A hundred percent AMI. For um, a one bedroom. It's seventeen hundred and sixty-seven, so the one, the hundred percent is based on that. Um, that salary for one person, because I think that they how they arrived at that chart.
So are they assuming? Any individuals gonna take a certain percentage of their income toward housing?
Yes.
And what what is that?
I think it's thirty.
Thirty percent.
Is affordable, so you're cut, you're overburdened if you're um, paying uh, greater than thirty percent.
Well, if we have no more further questions for Jen, I'll open the uh, to public comments. Do we have anyone here that would like to come forward? Please uh, give her name and address for the uh, record.
Well, I am Michael Herms, and I'm uh, representing Rafta tonight. I'm the director of facilities and capital projects. So I came to uh. Speak a little bit about this and actually support this. Um, Rafta and I've been working on a couple of these on a couple of different levels. We're looking at purchasing a hotel and doing this very thing that you guys are talking about tonight. As well as I've also been talking to a developer who's working on this, and we're gonna lease some units from him, depending on how things work out, so. We're pretty involved in this. Um, just as a little background, you know, at the moment, Rafta's short to about forty drivers, six or eight mechanics, and a half a dozen other miscellaneous people, and. We have several people who are, you know, living on couches and things like that that we're trying to accommodate at this time, so. We have a pretty, you know, dire housing need, and I think most of you know, we've had to cut some service this summer, because we hadn't been able to put drivers in the seats. Um, and we certainly don't want to do that this winter, you know, this is not a time we should be cutting service with gas prices and things like that, and uh. So we're we're, you know, in a pretty dire situation also with this. Um. So this would help us a lot, and as I said, we're we're looking at it, we um, I'd looked this over a little bit with Jen, and and we're very supportive of this. Uh, the how the parking spaces on these lots, you know, be almost impossible to increase more than just a few. Uh, as you all noted, you know, they're pretty much paved corner to corner, you know, they've got a little landscaping and all their units and everything there, so. When you try to do that, it it's kind of a deal killer for these things, and um, to enforce, you know, one five or, you know, anything like that really would be tough. Um, our use for these are going to be in uh, our seasonal drivers and people new to the valley, and then help them, you know, either they're gonna stay, they either come and work for the winter. Or the summer, and then they take off. Or the ones that stick around and convert to full-time year-round, then we help transition them into other places that we have, and uh, hopefully we'll be building here in the future too. So we see this as a real good, you know, um, niche for us, uh, this would fill a real niche for us in that seasonal. Uh, group that we really have a hard time getting housed for. It's very difficult for them to uh, get into anything, because they have to also come up with first last. And deposit, right? So they have to show up at the valley with six or eight thousand dollars to just get into a place, and we can get them into our stuff very cheaply. You know, and so that would help with that, so. Um, this would definitely help us, and again, we're looking at this on our on our own. Um, and so we are fighting through all these regs and, you know, trying to figure out how we're gonna make it work, but uh. The parking now, it seems to be kind of a killer for us, and this would really provide some relief. So, um, we're very supportive, you know, of this, and and would like to see it happen, and I know Jen's, we talked to Jen a little bit about this, but uh, we really appreciate everybody looking at this and helping out, so. I think it's gonna fill a real good need for everybody, and these are older hotels that really need some help anyway, you know, what we're all looking at is things. One we're looking at is built in the eighties when I was in high school, so. Uh, it's had some wear and tear, and it needs a little help and stuff like that, so I think it would revitalize a lot of things. Um, I kind of liked your discussion on security. Um, you're gonna be putting a lot of people in a very dense area for a lot of time, and. Uh, we talked a little bit about security cameras and lighting too, as we've been looking at how we're gonna deal with this kind of thing, so that seemed to make some sense. Um, I think trying to provide storage on site would be difficult, because I'd have to build more structures, you know, on something that's already corner to corner pavement um. And totally utilized, but it's not a, you know, it is a concern, but again, I think we're looking at these for much shorter term kind of things, and uh. These people generally don't arrive with a lot of stuff, and they're trying to, you know, take advantage of a little skiing, make a little money, and then they move to the next season of jobs. This is what we do. Um, the laundry seems like a real very good uh. You know, provision in this, we like that. I think that'd help everybody out, and most of these hotels. Have a laundry room, but they have a lot of commercial washer and dryers in it, but they're set up that you could convert them to six or eight individual load, you know, or. Yes, family size washer and dryer is pretty easy. Um, I think that's a a very good ask in these things, it would help. Doing your laundry is hard. There's not many coin operated or laundry mats anymore, you know, they don't seem to exist that often, so. Carbondale lost one of the two they had, and so we're down to one, I know, that's still left in town. Um. Let's hear, oh, you guys had a question about kitchenettes. Um, those general kitchenettes. Um, they've got a sink, um, stove top cabinets, a fridge, and then a hood, you know, that would go over, you know, not a exhaust head. Hood hood, but a smoke eater type, you know, so you can. Deal with that, so that's what we've been looking at, and you know, and all the catalogs and everything, and so. That's what we'll be probably putting in there if you're trying to define something, you know, you want to be general, but uh, that's basically what they come with. Um. So that's kind of where we're at, you know, we're very supportive of it, so if anybody had any questions for me? Happy to answer those.
Are are you eligible as as an entity for grants or any other kind of government uh, subsidies or funding?
We've been looking for grants for years for this kind of thing, and what happens is, you know, we're looking, you know, Rafta kind of needs to invest its money and for its employees, you know, and and then. It has to be kind of linked to their job. Uh, we really don't want a lot of our housing tied up with people that are workforce, that's not gonna work, and so. We're trying to fulfill this need for the rest of the valley to move everybody around, so we gotta be pretty um, tight with our restrictions. What we find with all the government grants is they all have to be open market. You know, they they, we don't have any control over them, so we haven't been able to find anything that would help us on that. I talked to another guy today that had some leads for me, uh. On people that might want to help us out, just uh, philanthropic kind of guys that are just looking to, you know. Help the valley be nicer and a better place. Obviously, there's a lot of people in this valley with money, and uh. They were just looking to maybe just kind of lend us some money or just help us look at something like this, so that's the only avenue we've found so far, so.
Um, I had a question too, so so are you looking at at them when you talked about your kitchenette? Is it really like a studio? I mean, when I think of a of a motel room, is it, you go in, you got the beds, you got a.
Yeah.
It's really.
Most hotel rooms would, you know, turn into that. I've talked to a couple developers that were thinking of combining some of the rooms and turning them into studios, so they had a couple of different things, and. We might consider that also, so we got something. A little nicer to offer some people that we think might be around for a longer period of time, like mechanics are super hard to come by. If you can find a decent mechanic, you know, they're. They're golden, and we might uh, go, hey, why don't you take this one and be a little more, a little more of enticement to people to come here, so. We've got it kind of crossed our mind about how we could do that too, so. But we're just in the beginning stages. I'm just trying to get a contract with the seller right now, and. Our engineers and architects are working on stuff for us at the moment too, so we're doing our due diligence on them right now. Anything else?
Great, thank you.
Great. Appreciate it.
Does anyone else from the public uh, would like to come forward and speak?
The small matter size comments.
Give your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, uh, Lee Touchfarber, and um, I'm with Renewering Fork. Uh, right at the uh, twenty-seven hundred Midland Avenue uh, roundabout. And um, the reason I attended is I connected with uh, Watkins about a week or two ago. And serendipitously, this meeting was occurring shortly thereafter. Uh, the discussion was around hotels being converted to um, uses that were very relevant to today. Um, the two that I had in mind was one that you're discussing, which is um. Uh, worker housing, so we have employees, occasionally we have to source staff from outside the market. Um, and sort of they migrate in. They move here because of the wonderful, you know, adventure and scenery and all the after activities. Um, but they find shortly thereafter that housing is extraordinarily expensive. And so, you know, there is sort of the conundrum. Um, and I do know that uh, vintage hotels uh, can adapt nicely and provide, you know, nice living space. Uh, at a much less expensive uh, rate relative to. Uh, compared to building something new, especially with labor costs, material costs that have gone through enormous inflation. Um, so it makes enormous sense for that, and uh, it'd be wonderful. I mean, it's almost not about the housing per se, it's just living in this environment. To a certain degree, people will take much less cool and extravagant, you know, living space just to be here. Um, the other use that um, uh, is really interesting is um. Uh, what's called middle market senior living, so this is a retirement-heavy valley. People come here from east coast, west coast, all over America, they retire here. And uh, they never want to leave. They don't want to go back and return to the east coast or wherever, from from wherever they came. Uh, they want to live out their years here. And uh, what we've found is that uh, market rates in your living is extraordinarily expensive. Uh, you go into Denver. It's expensive there. You come out here, it's still expensive. I mean, it could be five, six, seven thousand dollars or even higher per month. Um, so there is a market demographic that is uh, very large, and I'm sure many of you in here know people who fit this profile. That don't qualify for Medicaid waiver, um, but cannot afford market rate senior living. Uh, they will grow old and need assistance, and there's really nowhere for them to go. Um, some of them actually uh, migrate out of here uh, to other communities like Denver. Um, and there's even not really much many options there as well. So people are just kind of stuck, and so I think there's a huge social impact. Of uh, finding an inexpensive way, like through hotel adaptive reuse. Um, to, you know, convert hotels into um, senior living accommodations. Uh, not too dissimilar from apartment, an apartment conversion. Uh, there's just sort of the um, there's the care, it's really the, from a labor standpoint, uh, what would be brought in. And um, that can be, you know, an enormous sort of public service, a lot of people need it. And so that is intriguing to me, just given sort of where I, uh, the space that I work in, and so I just want to point that out for whatever it's worth. And um, uh, last comment is the um. The uh, what I was listening to earlier, I heard part of it on the internet and part of it while I was here live. Uh, it was really well thought out, so I learned a lot, just um. Listening to how it was dissected, it was addressed, it was very well rationalized, and um, so there you go. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Wish to come forward? Anyone online? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment period, and. This is an action item. Um. And we are the recommending body. So I will entertain a motion on planning item nineteen dash twenty-two code amendment. Hotel conversions.
I'll make a stab at this thing. Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve. Action one, consideration of code text amendments to municipal code section oh seven oh point oh one oh point oh seven oh, non-conformities. Et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Um, and with suggested findings on page five.
Okay, we have a motion. And a second. Further discussion.
I think. Just based off of the conversation we had, I think I would like to add that um, maybe they define what a kitchenette is. At a base level. Um, that there's a discussion on the safety needs in this, in the extended use. And that can just be lighting perhaps, and then um. Maybe as Carolyn discussed, specify how many um, washer dryer units per. per units there should be.
Okay. Do we care to amend?
Yeah, I, yeah, I, I've no problem amending it. And you know, question, I guess I have because we're the recommending body. So I'm assuming that all of the comments go to city council. And I mean, is that right? From the, from the housing committee as well? I mean, it's kind of, everything bubbles up to them as, as well.
It does. So Hannah is making these minutes that we're going to put in the packet tomorrow. Um, so yes, that, that is how that works. So we'll give them the same staff report that you had, and then I'll make some adjustments to the staff report that goes to them. Um, and um, we'll have some draft minutes, which obviously will be draft because they go in the package tomorrow. Um, I, I will ask one question if, if I may, um, related to the safety concerns. Would, would you want to include um, a requirement that there be outdoor wall mounted sharp cut off luminaries at the entrances of each um, unit with one manual lighting control switch at each entry door?
Period. Clarification, all of those were, were controllable by the tenants?
Yeah.
Okay. Would it, would it be advisable to have any others that are on uh, throughout the night?
And, and I do think that there are requirements, um, although I haven't been able to dive deeply into what the requirements are, but there are, there are requirements of hotels or exterior lighting.
So I like what you're proposing.
Yeah.
What did you say, Jim?
I, I like what she, she said.
Well, but, but, but it seems like to me it should be more open. I mean, like what you said, that, that it's not just restricted to just at the door. I mean, if there are others, I'm, so I'm kind of going more with what Joy's saying to leave it be more flexible and you guys figure out what that is. But I mean, I agree with at the door and maybe, you know, there could be a blind spot to your point that you're bringing up earlier at a building that, you know, shoot, that's a place where I don't want to go after, I don't know. I mean, you know, there could be some other things I think that are open to.
Maybe we could say at minimum meet the requirements for hotels.
I think that's it. I, I like that. Yeah. So, so unless there's any others, I guess I'm good with amending, are we calling it lighting? Or lighting slash safety combined or just lighting? Lighting, the kitchenette and the, and the laundry.
I would have to say security cameras might be a really good idea. But should be required.
Maybe we just leave it as lighting slash safety and let them come up with one. I'm good with that. Are you? Does that sound okay?
Yes.
Okay, we have amended motion and amended second.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. All right. So if there's no further discussion, call the question.
Giving you ample time because city council kept changing their minds before, so. Release the votes.
Uh, motion passes unanimously with a vote of seven to zero in favor.
Okay, great. Thank you. And now we're on to item five B, affordable, affordable housing accomplishment report.
Stay on over here.
I'm just guessing that Hannah is going to handle this one. Oh, we can take a break. Yes. I'll call for a five minute break. We'll be back at, uh, what would that be?
Transition.
Seven thirty-eight. You have the floor.
Jen, do you know where the um, screen key comes up at?
But you can just share from.
All right. Thank you so much. Hannah Klausman, Assistant Director of Community and Economic Development. Um, so at the last planning and zoning commission meeting, several of you had asked for some updates and information on um, what the city has been doing in regards to housing and affordable housing. So um, I had actually recently given city council the same progress reports. This was very easy to pull together. And so this is going to be an update on uh, various programs and various efforts, including voluntary deed restriction, which was adopted in twenty sixteen, uh, parking updates from our twenty eighteen development code adoption, vacation rental code update in twenty nineteen, accessory dwelling unit code updates in twenty twenty, inclusionary zoning programs adopted in twenty twenty-one. Um, our city owned property project that we are working with Habitat for Humanity on that Jen mentioned. And also our ad hoc housing committee tax question initiative. Um, so if you caught those years, staff's been very busy. So let's dive in and show you just how busy and how successful. Um, so actually I had mentioned that I had gone to a conference yesterday with um, Department of Local Affairs and Housing Colorado. And I wanted to show this to you to start off. Um, this is the National Low Income Housing Coalition's Out of Reach Report um, from twenty twenty-one. And this image is how much you need to earn by state to afford a modest two bedroom apartment. And Colorado is currently in ninth place for the highest, ninth is not good. We want to be number fifty. And we are number nine. So this is Colorado as a state. So obviously there's a lot of variables here. Um, but currently what they are showing is you need to earn um, twenty-seven dollars and fifty cents an hour to be able to afford a two bedroom apartment in Colorado. Um, and at minimum wage, that bottom number, if you are working for minimum wage, you need to work approximately ninety hours a week to be able to afford that item. So fun, happy feeling slides for you tonight. But just giving you a little context on the, the housing crisis that everyone mentions, that has been mentioned um, several times tonight. I think I've got one more. Oops. This happens when you use two computers at once. Um, so a couple more of the statistics from um, this report, you know, lists our minimum wage, average renter wage, um, two bedroom housing wage. So you can see like how far the, what you need to earn versus minimum wage. Um, percent of renters and that, oops, and then just kind of a, this is also a visual of the, the difference between what a lot of people are making and what they would actually need to make um, to afford two bedroom apartment. So now that we're all feeling great about being number nine. Um, so where we were, where we are, um, this is a list of those code amendment and policy changes that I just rifled off and the years that they were adopted. Um, and then this is actually, this says on the horizon, it's not just on the horizon, it is happening now. So um, our affordable housing tax question, which our ad hoc committee has been actively working on, um, and then also our Habitat for Humanity project is what we're going to talk about there. Um, so our voluntary deed restriction program, um, this is the program where system improvement fee, system improvement fees are waived, um, for applicants who voluntarily deed restrict rental prices to a maximum average of a hundred percent AMI. Uh, this program is for thirty years or unless otherwise terminated. That's the voluntary part. Um, so it has the basic components, primary occupancy requirements are based on employment or student retired disability benefit status. Units must average out to a hundred percent AMI on the rental side. Um, and that's based by bedroom. Um, so the chart that Jen had showed you before has the income limits and it also has the rent limits. Those numbers come out annually, so they do change. Um, and we let all of our applicants know when that change comes around. Um, it's a thirty year program, but can be um, left at any time due to the voluntary nature. Um, accessory dwelling units are also eligible. So we do have some accessory dwelling units that are um, that have capitalized on the system fee waiver and agreed to uh, reduce their rent to a hundred percent AMI. And then we did an amendment to this program in twenty twenty, um, due to some of the applicants leaving in a short amount of time. So we changed the amortization schedule. And um, so the actual fee reduction or what they would have to pay back if they left the program doesn't start until, until year five. So in the first five years of the program, if you leave, you owe back the entire amount of the system improvement fees that were waived. Uh, starting in year six, that starts to go down each year. Um, so results of this program, we have forty-five rental units um, that are currently in the program. And two major employers that are also um, active, um, Iron Mountain Hot Springs with fifteen units and Roaring Fork School District uh, with twenty-three units, Commissioner Waller would be, will be very familiar with. So that is kind of how this program is working as an update. If you guys have questions anywhere along the way, feel free to throw them out.
So I have a quick question and so on.
I'm assuming anyone, when they do an ADU, they know that if they do that, they get fee waived. Did, I mean, is that?
Mm-hmm. So.
Cause that's pretty, that's pretty cool.
I think, I actually didn't put this on the slide. I believe currently we have two ADUs that are um, in the program. Um, so when people come in and say that they want to build an ADU, sometimes our system improvement fees, which are currently around um, six thousand dollars for an ADU come as a shock. When staff sees the shock, we slide this paperwork across. And tell them that there is possibly another option. And we tell them that it's voluntary so that they could, they could have the system improvement fees waived currently. And then if things change or, you know, within that five year period, we explain that they would have to pay back the full amount. Or if they stay in the program longer, you obviously want to incentivize that, then it would go down the amount. And the two ADUs have, I think we've got one that's at the three year mark. It's been there from the beginning and another one at two year mark. So they're staying currently.
And is there a vac, like a vacancy requirement or?
We have a vacancy allowance. So in between tenants, there, you know, you have to market the unit.
Yeah.
Um, for that rent and try to fill it. So we don't want these units sitting vacant.
Right.
So there's some language there on timeline of how long to fill, which in this market, I don't think any of us would be surprised if you couldn't fill it the next day. So we really don't want those to somehow become somehow become a fee waiver for, you know, non, non-rental purposes. Right. Yes. Okay. Excellent questions. So parking is an interesting one. I think some of you will remember in 2018 when we did oh seven oh development code overhaul, which was a three and a half year project long. We changed everything in our development code and one of those aspects was changing the parking ratio that's required for multifamily and other uses. So you can see in this visual, under our old code, approximately 2.4 parking spaces per unit was the minimum. Our new code brought that down to 1.7 or 1.2 with our administrative parking reduction. So you can kind of see, we presented two projects here that show the difference. This is Six Canyon over in West Glenwood. And it approved in 2015 before the new code with 181 parking spaces for 116 units. So that was 1.6 per unit. And that required numerous variances that were incredibly contentious at the time that almost derailed the project. So you can see they asked for variances to get down to 1.6. Our new code allowance is 1.7 per unit. So we were already having developers come in asking at this threshold. So Bell Rippey is the other project that's on the right. This is a project going out by the Walmart area, approved in 2020, 148 parking spaces for 100 units. So that equates to about 1.48. They did access our administrative reduction, 20% for proximity to transit. But what we've seen is this is making housing projects a lot more feasible to fit in the spaces that we have in this valley. So parking is always going to be contentious. But if you look at it through the housing lens, this is considered a success to allow not over-parking or providing an abundance of parking, but really focusing on trying to get some of these units in there. And I will say from a staff perspective, Six Canyons, which was incredibly contentious at the time for that parking reduction, we have not heard any complaints at the staff level or seen any issues occurring in the neighborhood due to that project. So that's comforting, at least. Vacation rentals, everyone's favorite topic. So we did an overhaul of vacation rental policy and code in 2019. You can see I've done a very brief comparison of old code to new code. So we increased our permit application fees. It used to be $100 for eternity. You could have a short-term rental. We determined that staff hours spent on processing these is quite substantial. And so we tied that to the new permit application fees of $500 every two years for a new permit and $300 after that for renewal. So 500 one time and then $300 for renewal. We didn't have building inspections before, now we do. We included a 250-foot buffer between short-term rental permits and also placed a citywide cap on the number that could exist as well as in the number, percentage of multifamily building that could be short-term rentals. And the things that have stayed the same, they've never been permitted in accessory dwelling units. And permits have always not been transferable, meaning if you have a permit and you sell your house, your permit goes away and the new owner would have to apply for it if they are eligible. So the results in 2019, we had 134 permits. And today, this number could have changed since the staff report, as it does, but we have 97. So we have seen a reduction in the number of permitted short-term rentals in the community, which that was the F, that was the goal of the instituted regulations to try to balance the number that we were seeing and also the community need for those housing units that we were seeing going away. Staff considers this to be a success and is widely actually sought after regulation from other municipalities. Which is funny, I just mentioned it at the conference I was at yesterday and someone is like, oh my God, please give me that code. And I did. So coming soon to many other places near you. Accessory dwelling units. This is another code rewrite with the goal of making accessory dwelling units more accessible, easier to build, so reducing some of the regulation and allowing some flexibility. We increased the maximum size. Previously, you could only have an ADU that was 850 square feet. We bumped that to 1,000. And also increasing the percentage of your primary dwelling that it could be. So previously, your accessory dwelling unit could be 850 feet or 49% of your primary dwelling size. It's a very limiting factor. So we brought both of those up to allow for slightly bigger, but not overly large accessory dwelling units. They still need to be accessory two. We also added unit size exceptions for ADU conversions that are happening within the home. So no footprint increase. This is an internal accessory dwelling unit and that can be 50% of the structure. We also made allowances on our lot standards for front yard placement and a reduced rear yard setback allowance of five feet. So results, we have five accessory dwelling units that have been permitted since this time that were not previously allowed. So that's not a huge number, but it is more than zero success. So on the horizon, you guys have been part of these discussions. We're always talking about accessory dwelling units and relooking at the code. But one concept that's being thrown about is the possibility of allowing more than one ADU on a lot. That is still in its infancy, but it's just, it's a topic that has been discussed. So I wanted to throw that out there. Inclusionary zoning, the big one. So this is a regulatory measure. And this applies to rental and for-sale projects. And this, any any residential project of 10 or more units is subject to these requirements. And they would have to provide 20% of the units deed restricted to be resident occupied. And I can explain what that means. And then 10% of those, or 10% of the total deed restricted for affordability to 100% area median income. So this would be limiting the rent amount and also limiting the sale price of a home to within that 100% AMI category, or what's affordable to people earning 100% AMI. Has an occupancy requirement that's tiered for geographical employment. First, starting with priority for those working in the city boundary. And then moving out to the 81601 zip code. And then finally, 30 miles of city limit. That was to allow for some flexibility. So there's language there that states if you do not get enough applicants that qualify within city boundary, then you can move to the next tier. This is a program that's, that's our most recently adopted. And so we don't actually have anything on the ground yet, but we do have approvals, so projects that have been approved. So all, all units have been approved, but not built yet. We're getting very close. On the rental side, we have 12 resident occupied and six deed restricted. So these will be apartment units. That's what we have coming online. And then on the for-sale side, we have three resident occupied and one deed restricted to 100% AMI. So these are the projects that have been approved. They've come through you guys. And this was part of the requirement. So you can recall from the staff reports when we're like, it has to be the three-bedroom, it has to be the one-bedroom. But so this is what we have coming online. Obviously, the more projects that we come in, these numbers will go up. But this is the regulatory tool of requiring affordability. And this is what we have so far. So a summary of those, which you guys don't need. The other items that I didn't actually have in my PowerPoint is the city-owned property project. So we did get that approved. So City Council approved, working with Habitat for Humanity. They submitted their bid for the two city-owned properties at Eighth and Midland and out towards the airport. And so staff and Habitat for Humanity are actively working on the specifics of those deed restrictions and how that land transfer is going to work with Habitat. But that will produce 22 for-sale units that are deed restricted to a target of 80% AMI, which is huge. If I go back to what we are getting from our other programs, this is the biggest affordability project that the city has seen. So kudos to everyone involved in that because that's pretty big. And then finally, our ad hoc housing committee that is working on a possible tax question to fund affordable housing, they are still actively meeting and planning to come back to City Council for a work session, I believe, on next week, July 7th. Is that correct, Jen?
Yes.
Yeah. So they've been working hard at doing some outreach to other members and floating the possibility out. So you will see a decision on, on whether that will go to ballot possibly soon.
It wouldn't be a decision. There, there's a work session and they're going to talk about the questions that were posed, the poll. So we would anticipate that as soon as that they would take it up would be the next meeting. But they could ask for additional polling. There's a whole other host of things that could happen related to that item, but they will talk about it and it's at 3:00 PM.
Are they thinking about doing community outreach for that? Could be contentious, so you pre-sell the community. You know, because otherwise, remember, people hear the tax.
So there is, in the work that we have contracted with Bill Ray, who's doing the campaign work related, so the polling so far, that could be that kind of outreach. There are already some meetings that are scheduled. One actually tomorrow was some business leaders to, to have a conversation related to, not just business leaders, primarily business leaders, I think. There, there are other anchor institutions who will be in attendance tomorrow.
What kind of tax? Would it be a property tax, a sales tax? Do we know?
So the two questions that were polled were a lodging tax or accommodations tax, so an increase, and then an admissions tax. And the, the group did do work kind of looking at the rest of the other taxing opportunities. In the end, we, we tested the two questions. So lodging and the, you know, there was a in the polling, there was a number of percentage that was tested. That doesn't mean that that's what would go on the ballot. But it wouldn't likely be more than that because you wouldn't want to test it a number and then ask for more on the ballot. That doesn't, you know, make good sense. I will say that the admissions tax was, in this polling, did not poll favorably.
But it seems as though most of the tax burden wouldn't be held by the residents. It would be tourist-based, which, you know, I'm okay with that. They don't get a chance to vote on it.
So that is my update. That's wrapped. I would say I'll be here all week, but I think I'll be here for like eternity. So. And then I also provided a spreadsheet showing what housing units come on and where they're at. This is something that we have to update all the time. So it might already have some things out of date on it, but this shows you how many the, the units and projects that we've had come in. We started tracking this in about 2016 because prior to 2016, we had no apartment complexes coming in, no larger. So this is, this is focused on, I believe, five and above. So more multifamily projects that have come in. And then we have the total down there. You guys have been asking for this information for a while. Also. Stop, share. Let's try this again.
And Jen said in 2019, the, the number that was identified was 2,000. We were 2,000 shy of meeting our need.
Yes. So, and that's an interesting number. And Jen can certainly elaborate on this. The number showed that we had a shortage across certain, certain AMI categories, actually all the AMI categories, basically, from the very low income, from the 30s, 40s and 60s, all the way up through 160% AMI. We had shortages in each of those categories. So I would highlight that the 2,000-unit shortfall did not just mean if we build 2,000 units, we're good. That's not what that meant. And really, it's targeted to the affordability piece. So we had, we needed more units in certain AMI categories. And, and from that time, granted, with all the programs I just went through, we are trying to get at some of those lower categories, but we have not filled the gap that was listed in those AMI categories at all. Habitat is the first one to kind of get on the board with 80% AMI because that was one of our biggest gaps that we witnessed. So we have built, or well, not we, other people have built a lot of units that have come online. You can see this number here. Some of these are still pending. They haven't come online, but approximately 1,304 units either approved or built in, in some capacity. But if you look at what their affordability is, they don't make a dent in that 2,000-unit shortfall because they're at the market rate higher end, where we had some need, but not the greatest part of our need. So I just want to, that's a hard number to wrap around and Jen can probably elaborate because we have some very intelligent consultants relooking at those numbers to try and come up with updates.
I wasn't necessarily going to try to elaborate, but what I was going to say is that some of the work that we're doing that is regional, so the regional housing nonprofit that we just stood up with Picking County and other jurisdictions in the Roaring Fork Valley, that that, that group, the biggest thrust of the initial effort will be in what I'm calling development neutral strategies. So trying to match the, you know, there's a mismatch today. It's hard, I like to talk with my hand. There's a mismatch today from people's ability to pay and what the market is charging. And so yeah, are there strategies that the nonprofit can pursue that are related to closing the gap? So some of the things that are happening in Eagle County with buy downs, focusing on short-term rentals, other, other places in the, the valley, not so much in Glenwood Springs, as Hannah just talked about, that we have done a lot of work in this space, but that that as a strategy is this regional effort that we're trying to look at, how do we address that gap? And pursuing, we just put in a grant with, that we're the fiscal sponsor of, but it's a Department of Local Affairs grant for the Housing Coalition nonprofit to try to do a scan of what we have in all of these categories and try to get some strategies related to, to closing that gap. And we are pursuing multi, I say we, she's on the board. Multiple strategies in trying to address that. And some of it will be with development neutral. So I would say that this hotel conversion piece falls into that category where it's in the built environment, but it isn't housing in the traditional sense. Can we move it closer to that so that it's better for people who, as an alternative, are living on someone's couch or in a car or those kinds of things?
So, so I had a question on that. I mean, because I heard you talk about that earlier. So I, I think that's awesome. I love the valley approach. It's good. So, so will you, are you coming out with like a you know, some, some sort of, I'll call it a master plan that's got the 160, the 120, you know, that breaks it down into multiple levels that says, here's where we're short and for sale for rent, you know, whatever all of that mix is. Because I mean, to me, it seems like that's a good thing for the community then to really understand. So when you get whatever kind of weird development comes in, you can really talk it, here's what the need is versus, when I hear a number like 2,000, that really doesn't mean anything to me. Versus, you know, is it 2,000 trophy homes? Is it 2,000? And which I know it's not, but, but I mean, how, how do you understand what that is? I think it, it's hard for us in the community to know what it is. So I think that's a great thing. If that sounds like that's what you're working on.
Yeah, I guess that's my final two updates. Staff is actively working on an interesting hotel conversion.
Friggin' awesome.
You may have heard about that one. And then the regional nonprofit, which is the city's efforts to collaborate regionally, because I think we all know that this is a regional crisis. We're hearing from, you know, employers all across the board, not just within Glenwood Springs, but up and down our valley. And so the city is identifying that we need to be a collaborative partner. But up and down our valley. Um, and so the city is identifying that we need to be a collaborative partner. And so I am your newest board member on that wonderful nonprofit.
I have, I have um another, another question. Is, is, so, you know, we've always kind of talked, at least I've only been on here for a year or so, but. But of uh for sale units, you know, we keep getting more and more rental units and, and so. Is there any work on, or you know, can you do that? Maybe that was a legal issue. I think Richard might have talked about it one time that. You know, how can you tell people here is you have to have a certain number for sale units, or is that kind of off the table? Or is that? Is that a real thing?
I mean, we got a little piece of it with our inclusionary zoning, um, coming back on the books. Um, as far as looking at other mechanisms to increase the for-sale product. Um, you know, there are quite a few limitations out there that we can do to impact the market. Um, on the legal side, I'm, I'm not sure. Um, that we've exhausted all those options, but Richard's a very busy man.
But just be interesting to hear what other communities, municipalities say. Encourage diverse housing, I think is what you're getting at. It's like, we have all these. I mean, we've talked about it ad nauseam, but it's like, yes, we're reaching some sector, which is market rent. Of, you know, for rent units, but all the other um sectors are not really being addressed. And how do we encourage that through code or through the comp plan? I don't know if it's through that process, but.
Certainly something that's top of mind and that we've heard. Uh, we've heard the desire, the need loud and clear um from all sectors, city council included.
I will say that, the. Because of the pricing of all the things, so land, labor, materials. That. The um. You know, the developers are focusing on multifamily re- residential. The barrier to multifamily residential being for sale is um the construction defects law. And I know that there are some communities that have tried to limit that. Um, and I don't know, you know, the, it, it's with, without large success. And I do know that. Um, but that is one of the barriers, and it's very difficult for a, a local community to combat that, something that's a statewide issue.
That's, that's a state law. It's not even like a home rule.
I have an oddball question. I, I'm always sort of like looking for ways to get housing for seniors and have them move out of their bigger houses and sort of scale down. And I think this gentleman in the back is thinking similarly. How do, what's the definition of retired?
Oddball indeed.
I mean, is it an age? Is it a?
Well, I, uh, no, I, I, what I was thinking of is what we included. Or did not include in our housing guidelines that, that is our implementation of our inclusionary zoning. Uh, retirement was one of the topics that city council wanted to review after the program had been implemented for a while. We haven't done that, because it's been implemented for a couple of years, but we still don't have any online yet. Um, so it's, it's definitely something that um other communities have identified and like Summit County has an allowance. For retirees, and I believe we included something initial in our housing guidelines that allows for that to occur. The Summit County example has um an incentive for the, to kind of downsize. So if, if a retired um occupant is in a larger unit, uh, they can. Kind of transfer to another smaller unit. There's some language there. Um, I don't think we've flushed that out in our program to its entirety just yet. Uh, but there is a definition for like. Some category, or some municipalities have it defined that you have had to have worked for so long in the community and then retired. To be eligible. Um, other communities, you can be a retired person and get a unit. They're more flexible. So it really varies across the different uh programs for deed restricted housing.
Yeah, because I could see that, you know, someone might retire, and I know people who've done this. They retire, they're bored, they want a part-time job. Now are they risking their housing? You know, if they work twenty hours a week, are they no longer retired? Or say, you've got plenty of money, you're forty, are you retired?
Who is this person that has enough money?
Well, they probably live up valley, but.
I'd like to meet them, become their friend. Don't forget your mic, Commissioner Conrington. Thank you.
Um, I, over in the Miller Ranch project over in uh Edwards, they do have some of those situations that you were just speaking to. Where um they had to put caps on like how much they can work. And because sometimes somebody would sell their house for like three million dollars and move into this, one of these deed restricted places. Buy it outright and then just camp, you know, so there was all these things that they had to um identify. You know what I mean? And put parameters wrong, guardrails for what that all.
Yeah, and oftentimes, you know, they, they won't count your investments as.
Yeah.
Your, you know.
Yeah, and that was the other thing.
And what if you were a widow and, and you know, you were a housewife your whole career? You know, your husband dies, now you're not legit retired. You might be eighty and have raised a family and you might not.
Yeah.
Qualify.
What we find with um inclusionary housing or any of these deed restricted housing. It can get very complicated and it involves a lot of feelings and it can be um very challenging. You know, you've got aspects where you want to house the most people and you want to house your workforce. Does that mean? You know, asking someone to leave a unit that they're comfortable in, if they don't work for a certain employer or work within a certain geographic area.
Ask or make.
These are the hard conversations that we've had with you guys, we've had with council, and it will always be iterative. It, there's constantly this look. Um, like the voluntary deed restriction program, we got feedback from the community, like you don't have anything for disabled status. In there. And we looked at our code and we didn't, because we did, we don't necessarily think of everything. And guess what? It's there now. Because we amended it. Um, and City of Glenwood Springs likes to amend their code all the time. So our ears are open to the needs um of the community and, and that's about as much as I could say is how we move forward on that.
Have we hired someone for the, the affordable housing piece yet? As a city to manage that program?
I'd kick that one over to Ms. Ooten.
We didn't, um, we didn't put it out. We did have that conversation with city council. Um, and I, I believe that it was at the same time we were talking about a ballot measure um in the November, for the November cycle last year. Um, and we, so we didn't open it. Um, we did provide the information of what we thought it would cost to hire a person in, you know, with the skill set to, to do that work. Um, we do anticipate that if there is a ballot question, that one of the components of the ballot question would be that. We need staff capacity to be able to um admin- administer a program. So um then Richard just asked me this question. We are working toward and maybe have even inked, and I'm just not aware of it, a contract with. Uh, Fairfield County Housing Authority to do the management of those, of the inclusionary zoning that we put into place. Um. And we would anticipate that that would come back in-house if we were, if there were a ballot measure, it did pass. If we would then hire somebody to be able to do that work, and then we would bring that administration in-house.
Very good.
That's all I have.
Thanks, Hannah.
You're welcome.
Okay, we are to item number six. Commissioner comments. And I'm gonna start at this end and not at April's end. She's new.
There you go. Um, I love the, the new extended stay um changes to the code. I think that. I mean, I've had, just in my own professional um experience, I've had a teacher who was moving to town. She couldn't find housing, um rentals or for purchase. And if she could have had a place um where she could have landed temporarily, I think it would have helped her. Make a more poignant decision with her housing. And so she was kind of faced with this, do I even take the job? Do I not? I can't move, because I have no housing. So I think it's gonna meet a huge need that we have. And I think it's just a creative approach to, like we said, those diverse, um, those diverse. Housing needs that we have. So this is just an element of that. One of the concerns I do have is. Um, I had another client who lived in a hotel for over two years, and he said he was paying about thirty-five hundred dollars a month. When it came down to what he was paying per week for this. Hotel type situation. And so I know we have the affordable piece in that. My concern is if these are privately owned. Um, you know, I hope that these, these proprietors don't charge. Exorbitant amounts, but. Good job.
Yeah, I've gotta agree that I think this um hotel conversion could, could solve some immediate problems. Um, and I have an inkling that it won't be so nice that they're gonna want to stay for years anyway. Hopefully, there uh will be opportunities for um, for folks using this to, to move up and. Uh, and I can't imagine someone trying to move here with a few kids to take a teaching job, like you're gonna live in a, in a motel. But there, there really don't seem to be any other places. You see it every day on a, on Facebook. People are like, I've got a job. And I need to move in October, and they're looking already, and they might not find anything. Um, I, I'd still like to maybe follow up on RV parking or sort of in-town camping as another. Solution to uh this housing crisis, because people are camping out there in their cars. Um. But uh between the hotel thing and the, and the housing update, it's, it feels like we're on the right track. So thanks for all your hard work.
So I'll go down to April.
Yeah.
Welcome to the Dias, by the way.
Thanks. I haven't had too much to say. Um, been listening a lot tonight, but I just wanted to echo everyone's thoughts. I think that this. Mixed housing and, and um hotel conversion, long-term stay stuff, sounds really exciting for our immediate needs. Um, Commissioner Hardcastle and a couple other commissioners, and I'm still learning names. I'm really sorry. I wish the name tags were like on my. Mentioned that it's important that we make these spaces safe and welcoming. And I just wanted to echo that. I think that that's how you get people to stay and take long-term positions and find long-term housing and really, you know. Um, move up in their station. So I would just echo, yeah, let's make folks in these spaces while they are like potentially transient. Feel safe and welcome and heard in this community.
Yeah.
You guys do such great work. It's just really, it's amazing. What a great uh opportunity for everybody in our community. And I really like the approach that Rafter brought up with this whole, this is where we're gonna start and what we're gonna help them go here. And that is just so innovative, and it's really great thinking. I mean, I do have, you know, the same concern about, you know, are we gonna hold them there forever? Um, but I don't think so. I don't think that's the motivation behind, you know, some of these ideas. And thanks so much for the report, because it's really helpful for us, you know, because, you know, for those of us who are new or. You know, you're just showing up. It's really nice to know what's going on in our community that's positive. So thank you so much, you guys. It's awesome. And thanks, Richard, for all your hard work tonight.
Well, just uh to say that I think this is uh making a really great place even greater. So, thanks for the work and. Jen, what do you have for director's comments?
Uh, we, uh, with my hands. Um, I think we, uh, you know, obviously, we've been doing a lot of work in the, in the housing space. As you've seen, we've are also been um in terms of uh the Department for Community Development, been working. Um, on the Sixth Street and North Landing, adv- advancing some of that. So I do think there is probably a um, a value when we have space on an agenda to kind of revisit what's in the Sixth Street Master Plan. Because um I know that uh probably, maybe only George um is, has, you know, experience with that. Um, from when it was originally um brought forward. So um, you know, I think that that, that work is worth revisiting. We are taking a break from the um comp plan for July. That will give us a little bit of um opportunity to kind of refine some of the information that we've already heard. Um, I, I think it's a lot to digest and um we did put out on kind of a fast timeline, which is kind of our way. Um, so we're gonna hopefully take this time to refine it and then bring something in August that is more um easily kind of. Uh, it, for you guys to be able to react to in terms of, we're getting it now into the piece, or it's more the recommendations of moving forward.
So what's the overall scheduling?
So I think that probably pushes it. It probably pushes us a month, so probably like into January before we are. Um, looking at something that would be adopted by city council. So um, I don't know that we've. I have fully digested, I will be honest, what that looks like in terms of, um, I know that there was a plan. For us to have kind of a joint session of planning commission and city council in October. Whether or not that stays on and, or moves to November will. Stay tuned. I will try to let you know. Um, and I think that's it for me.
We do have an application for our July Planning and zoning commission, so that will be held. It's a residential development. Um, shocking, I know. That's all I have.
Okay, great. Well, then this meeting is adjourned.